Good evening, everybody. Welcome. We will start this meeting and Suzanne, would you like to do the roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews is absent. Councilmember Sonier.
Here.
Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne. Everybody would like to stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll start this meeting with Agenda Item Number Three and Tweed's Moose is Loose Sale and Mike Perini, welcome. Or I don't know who's gonna do this tonight. Looks like Dana Coit.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of staff, and the community at large. It's been years of cold out there.
It's cold out there.
Temperatures have fallen. So has that traffic count downtown. It's that time of year again. And I'm here to invite you all to the 18th year anniversary of the Moose is Loose. The annual Moose is Loose Shopping Extravaganza has become a very successful signature sales event for our local businesses and their customers. In a nutshell, this collaborative small business event, unique to Woodland Park, Colorado, is one of the businesses, by the businesses, and for the everybody.
Yes.
And done in a quality, creative way that's fun for all. Many visitors wait with anticipation for the campaign to begin and have made it an annual shopping tradition, bring family and friends, and explore our community and all the great things we offer: shopping, arts and crafts, adventures, and more. This year, our campaign's theme is "All Things Woodland Park," honoring our great community and the mountain lifestyle found here. The dates of the campaign are February 10th through February 25th, 2018. New this year, and on the last Saturday of the campaign, which is February 24th, is the integration of the OHV industry with demo OHV and ATV rides at Woodland Station. Also, the Moose will be at the Woodland Aquatic Center and playing disc golf at Shining Mountain, all part of "All Things Adventure," Saturday, the 24th of February. Additionally, this campaign integrates many activities and highlights of the town, bringing delight to those who participate. Adventurers are excited to explore the community through Moose Tracks Pass, eager to drop off their entries for a chance to win $500 Moose Buck Shopping Spree. Kids enjoy the coloring and essay contests, bringing our youngest community members into the festivities, and allowing us to tap their young minds for creativity. You can see these great works of art and writing at the Woodland Park Library. Take selfies with the Moose. Post as you stop and shop by local businesses. You can post at facebook.com/tweedsmoose. The first 200 shoppers, when the doors open at Tweed's, 10:00 a.m., Saturday, February 10th, will receive gift bags with hundreds of dollars of coupons, discounts, and more from local businesses participating in the campaign. This year, more than 40 businesses, nonprofits, and organizations have partnered together for the Moose is Loose campaign. And I'd especially like to thank our campaign sponsor, Park State Bank and Trust, and also thank the Woodland Park Main Street Organization and the City of Woodland Park for showing your support as well. Mark your calendars, everybody, February 10th through the 25th. Hope to see you all there. So, Mr. Mayor, any chance of a photo with Moose?
Oh, I'd love to. Carol, you have a question first?
I had a question. Does a Moose wear a one-piece or two-piece swimsuit?
Be at the aquatic center and you'll find out.
Anyone else, council? Questions? Where would you like us, Mr. Perini? Okay. Almost got loose. There you go.
Three, one, two.
Thank you. Thanks, Moose. Thank you, sir. Thanks. Okay, we have no additions, deletions, or corrections. Tonight, we'll move on to the consent calendar and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have two sets of minutes on the consent calendar, the first being from the January 9th special meeting, and the second being from the January 18th regular council meeting.
Council, questions? Comments?
Move to approve.
Second. And a second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you Suzanne. We move on to unfinished business, Agenda Item Number Six, and the discussion of the hiring new city manager council tonight. A couple of things we need to do to start with. We need a motion suggesting salary range. For those of you who weren't here last meeting, council went into executive session and came up with consensus on salary, and in executive session, we're not allowed to make any decisions or vote, and so today, first thing we're gonna do is make a motion to approve the salary range that we decided on. Do we have any discussion about salary range before we get that motion? If not, then I will ask for a motion to approve the salary range, which is between $100 and $140,000. Is that correct?
110.
Well, we talked about 100 with a median of 120 and a top end of 140.
Correct. I think that's right. 1, 120, 140. Everybody remember that? Agree with that? Carol?
Yes, just offer that the discussion of the salary range was based on a number of factors to include comparison to like positions across the state and cities of like size, as well as using some federal pay scales as a guide as well. Move to approve that salary range.
Second. Great. Any other discussion, council? Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Next, approve the job description. I'll start by thanking Val and Carol, and certainly our city attorney, and others that have helped in this process. It's been a little bit longer and more arduous than any of us imagined, but we've got a great job description now, and it's an improved, updated document that we can fall back on in the future. And I think everybody here is in favor of it, at least that's what the correspondence has told me. So, if this job description is favorable to everybody, as we've discussed, I would call for motion to approve the changes in the job description.
So moved, but I'd also like to add that the final job description was reviewed by legal counsel.
Marty Koster.
Add no charge to the city clerk.
That's correct.
That's even better.
Is Marty with CIRSA or independent?
Marty is with the permanent maiden, Dunham lawyer.
Again, I'll reiterate my motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any other discussion?
One, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we saw in our correspondence, front and back, I had a few problems with limiting under essential duties, physical demands. Because of the notations made by council, I thought it would be appropriate to talk about the accommodations that we may make when we do the job announcement, and if the draft job announcement shows that, if that's works with everybody, I just wanted to make notes.
And to your point, I'm not sure Aaron or Marty have had a chance to look at that, as long as there's no contradiction with your recommendation in the job announcement and the job description.
Yeah, I fully expect we'll get an actual legal description as opposed to my description.
Thank you.
That said, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You do.
Good. Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the last thing relative to the hiring of the new city manager tonight will be to approve the job announcement. I know this is still in progress. We're really, really close, council. I'd like to tie this up tonight. I want to get this posted if possible, or let's put it this way, I want to get as close as we can tonight. So, sometimes, some of us are really busy and have trouble corresponding via email, so my point is, let's do everything we can tonight to see if we can get this moving forward and getting right back on our timeline.
Mr. Mayor.
Val?
Thank you. So, I came up with the draft that you seen in front of you for the job announcement, based on council member Harvey's draft.
You can call me councilman.
Excuse me, sir. They don't have it in front of them?
Oh.
They each got it emailed today for comments.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, we're really in a super draft situation. I made a real quick draft between doctor's appointments, and so it's real rough at this point. I would suggest that it's pretty close, though. There's probably typos in it, there's probably a few misstated facts, like number of employees and things like that, that Mr. Butterey can correct us on those, things like that. So I would suggest that it might be a pretty quick back-and-forth process to get this fixed.
Carol, how'd you do it?
I would agree, too. If we could have at least 48 hours via email to clean up this version, I appreciate that you did this so quickly this afternoon. And in saying that, I will offer up a couple of just stylistic corrections. I did have a question, though, about, I think probably, an appropriate addition that you made about ADA and age accommodations. The only question I had on age accommodations, I'm not sure, I'm sure there must be a phrase that would be, would cover our ability under the Americans with Disabilities Act, but with the exception of Noel and Tipp, I think all of us up here can buy coffee at the senior price at McDonald's, and I just wonder what accommodation we make for age. Is it a place to take a nap in the afternoon, which I'm all for? But as we get the legal review and we finalize this, maybe we can find out what the phrase should be.
Would you like to wait, and if we get you the final copy, how long do you anticipate this should take?
It will depend on our employment lawyer, her timeframe. It worked out very well last time because she had an immediate window. So, if she is available, I think we would get a quick turnaround from her, but I've not had a conversation with her in the last week.
Counsel, it would be your goal, if you see all this information, you got it today via email, do you think by the end of this weekend, we can come to some consensus?
I see not. Why not?
Yeah.
I mean, we'd beat this horse to death.
Thank you. I would concur with that. That said, we're gonna post it without our next meeting, and so Suzanne, do you have a list of where we might post this? What do we look like in that?
I do, Mayor. I have it available. I'll pass out.
Thank you. So, just in process, council, I just want to make sure I'm straight on this. We'll agree on the job announcement. It'll be looked over by our attorneys, and then our city clerk can post the job announcement. And then my next question would be, we talked a little bit about this, if I was going to apply for that job, if anybody's gonna apply, would it be me? Someone would apply for that job, their application goes to Suzanne, and at some point, we're gonna be able to, to all have an opportunity to see those. Some of us had differing opinions on that. Val, why don't you restate kind of what you're thinking in terms of those applications, and I'd like to make a decision on this tonight also.
So, there's various modes to post them. Usually, Google, Dropbox type of things, Google Drive, Dropbox, MediaFire, there's a lot of possible ways that council people can look at the Internet. You can make access restrictions on those, read only, write only, blah, blah, blah. I was hoping maybe if our IT person was up to speed, they might be doing that, but there's at least one or two people up in this room who could help with that.
What's the downside of everything going to Suzanne and then going to us from there?
Just a more modern way of doing things, but I don't have a problem either way.
I'll go ahead and address, I thought we discussed at one time that Suzanne would receive the applications. She would not email them to us. We would meet in the conference room and go over them.
And that's what we talked about, but now we're trying to make a decision, and we can do that. We can do that two by two.
I thought it was too, it wasn't, we were trying to be cautious that the applicant names would not get out, and so that's why we didn't want Suzanne to email them to us.
If they got emailed to us, how would they get out?
And what Val had suggested.
You never know.
Which is a protocol I've used before, is that they come to the city via any means the individual resumes can get here. It could be snail mail, email, a website, but for us to access, to be dropped into this Dropbox where we then could access them, or come here and physically look at them, either way, I don't know. My comfort level with a Dropbox is about 99% in terms of security. Anything could be hacked, but I just don't see that as that much of a risk. I might be wrong.
And I like the idea of the Dropbox, simply because it makes it easy access for all of us, kind of anytime we want, instead of having to come at a certain time.
Well, there is a public part of Dropbox that you have to be careful with.
Yeah, I would suggest.
So Dropbox might be a little...
Google Drive has some better protections on it. It's the same sort of thing.
Noel, you know about those things, Google Drive, in that regard?
Google Drive's fine.
Okay.
And I do really appreciate your comments, Councilman Sawyer, because your comments were echoing the concern that I raised, because the law in Colorado is that these applications cannot be disclosed, so thank you for that. And my suggestion, in sort of the more antiquated approach, is that I simply don't have the technical knowledge, but to hear from council that this is something that would be 99%, that's a standard that I think would serve the council, and you could approach it that way.
So you're good with that?
I am, hearing the 99%.
Well, that was a swag, but I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Well, the question is, is Suzanne comfortable with it? Because she's gonna be setting up the Google Drive with a Gmail account, sending it out to us with the login information. We're setting up the Gmail Drive, and then it'll sync with our computers, we'll have the information there. Scary part is if we do anything, it might sync with everybody else's computer. So, I really just go back to, let's sit down and just look at them. I mean, it just, it's, this town isn't that big that we have to drive for hours to get here. So, get all the applicants in, and maybe we get 10 in by, or 5, 10 in in a week, we can just schedule all to come in, sit down, and go through them.
Mr. Schaefer, what do you think?
It's up to you. It's really, I'm indifferent about it. I just hope we have good applicants.
I agree with that.
There was another suggestion, Noel, that they simply be delivered to us physically.
That's even a better idea.
My neighbors love it when the police car comes up.
Yeah, I mean, my neighbors, too. They go, hey, the police were over there.
I mean, we can deliver them twice a week, once a week, whatever council desires. That's not difficult. We'll make copies for each one of you and have it in a sealed envelope.
Val?
If we set it up with read-only access for the council, we won't have a problem of writing over them or doing some of the other horror stories we could possibly do. I just, that's just an aside.
What's the downside, Val, of having them delivered to us for you?
Are we talking about physically delivering?
Physically delivering to your house.
Is that what time of day, I guess?
So, none, is what you're telling me? Pretty safe, pretty secure, council?
And if you didn't want them delivered, you could certainly come by and pick them up. I could have them in your council mailboxes in sealed envelopes.
I'm always for less paper, but, you know, the digital's more attractive to me, but that's just my habit that I always wear.
I'm inclined for a physical delivery.
Noel? Yes. Sean? Paul?
I think it cuts down on this discussion as far as making mistakes digitally and all that. Physical delivery is the proper way to go, and it provides the security needed.
So, sounds like we have consensus. Everybody good with that? We don't need a motion for that? Good. Let's look at the suggested posting sites, because I know it's not as extensive as we initially talked about. There were more on here, but we thought that these seven or eight made some sense. Take a look at this list, council, and tell me where you think we're missing. If not, we'll post here, and go ahead, Val.
Mr. Mayor, I'd made a list of all kinds of other places which are more commercial. These are going to be looked at mostly by municipal. It goes to my point of expanding this to private sector, candidates who might be looking. Some of the other sites that I listed just out of the blue are Monster, Career Builder, Glassdoor, Simply Hired, ZipRecruiter, US dot jobs, LinkedIn, Manager Crossing, and Indeed dot com. I would suggest that some of those be researched for, they're basically free, most of them, and put them up there for the half of the candidates that we try to include in our job description and job announcement, which is the private sector.
Some of those do cost, actually. Indeed is probably the best one.
Yeah, I've checked Indeed, and they do...
They do a good job.
A good job.
The other ones, I believe, have to, they cost a little bit of money.
I would propose that a little bit of money's worth paying.
Do we want to limit it to 1, 2, 3?
I wouldn't go 10 or 15. I don't think we need that many. Do you, Val? If we go Indeed, and if we go LinkedIn, to the ones that...
Well, I would suggest that, you know, I don't know that we can make that decision right now, not knowing the costs or the access or the limits on what they can put in there. I would suggest that maybe staff could take a brief look at it.
Can we start with what we have here, and maybe Indeed and one other, and see how it goes, and if not, then we can expand our offering?
I would offer, time is of the essence, but if Suzanne could put a, someone on the city staff could put a price associated with each of these, send it to us via email, and then give our druthers back to the rest of the council.
Is that good? Including the ones that Val just mentioned?
Yes. Yeah, I'm not real keen on Monster dot com, because it is monstrous, but, for instance, I know ICMA, I think, has a, not ICMA, yeah, ICMA has a price of about $600 bucks.
Yeah, it's pretty pricey. I know my wife just had to hire some estheticians, and it was like $400 for like a week to put on. I don't know what site it was, but it wasn't. I was surprised how expensive it was.
With the posting on ICMA, they will review the announcement for accuracy and any legal considerations as well.
Suzanne, you think you could get that information to us tomorrow? Or Monday?
How about Monday?
That's good. I'm asking.
Thank you. I appreciate you asking.
We just want to expedite this as much as we can.
Sure.
Without missing anything. So we'll have two things to consider between now and Monday, and hopefully by then, we can get a document to our city attorney and start moving forward in that regard. Is that fair?
Could you also include this list with the pricing and all that, too, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And sir, I'll get your, I didn't write them all down, but maybe later I can...
It's off of this.
Okay. Thank you.
The only other question I had for this process is, for the job announcement, would you want to determine how many days it's posted?
What was the verbiage we talked about earlier, Suzanne?
We talked about picking a date that we would start reviewing the applications. So typically, when we do a hire here at the city, we give a review date. We say maybe two weeks from now or three weeks from now, we'll start reviewing the applications. And then we could still receive more in, but that's when we'll start looking at them.
So maybe 30 days for the span of...
How about March 1st? You good with that?
That's gonna be less than two and a half weeks.
Really? Today's the second?
First. Talking about a whole nother week.
First, we go, we post it Monday, three and a half weeks.
You can have an opening date and a closing date, and as the resumes come in, they'll begin to be reviewed.
That's fine. How much more would you want, Val?
I'm just suggesting 30 days is pretty standard for...
30 days from the time we post it?
Correct.
Everybody good with that? Suzanne? 30 days from the day we post it. Anything else relative to this discussion?
Just one more. Your Honor.
You can call me your honor.
I'm so used to calling Judge Bruce when he sits up there. Your honor, excuse me. How often would council like the resumes and applications delivered? Would you like them weekly? Would you like them twice a week?
Twice a week, for me.
Okay.
I just want to see how many we get first. I think maybe that's the measurement, because we might not get any right away.
Are we gonna make any facility for access to them digitally?
Sure, I can scan them. We'll scan them all.
Just one last thing. Let's do our best to get this done by Monday. Counsel, I ask of you, we need to move forward. Okay. We move on to ordinances on initial posting and considering ordinance 1317, and Sally Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Councilmembers. Ordinance number 1317 is on initial posting. It is for Bad Rock Auto Sales to extend their conditional use permit for the auto sales portion of Mac McClung's business for eight months. So, we will hold a public hearing on February 15th regarding this ordinance. Request that you approve it on initial posting, setting the public hearing for February 15th for 1317.
Thank you, Sally. Counsel, this is on initial posting. Normally, we just set the date and discuss it on the 15th, unless you have any other questions at this time.
This is all about a sidewalk?
That's correct.
Two years already?
That's correct.
Just a sidewalk.
We'll have the discussion in two weeks. Okay. Okay, need a motion to consider ordinance 1317 on initial posting and set for the public hearing on February 15th. Thank you, Suzanne.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer? Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. And we move on to public hearings. Agenda item number eight. We'll start with ordinance number thirteen sixteen. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. If, as council may recall, we spoke about this last council meeting on initial posting. April fifth, two thousand fifteen, we had our municipal election. We changed the charter to allow us to do some of our posting of publications and notifications on the city website. And at the February sixteenth, two thousand seventeen council meeting, council passed ordinance twelve ninety-nine that allows public notices to be published in the Courier by title only and a brief summary. We are proposing to continue publishing the ordinances in the Courier by title only and a brief summary of the ordinance, and the entire notice would be published on the full website.
Council, any discussion? Okay, if not, we'll call for a motion. Consider ordinance thirteen sixteen. I'm sorry. We are in public hearing. If anyone from the audience would like to step forward, this is the time. Okay. Council?
I'll move to approve ordinance number thirteen sixteen.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Suzanne?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we're gonna move on to public hearing eight B, and before we do that, I need to read this. Council members are using electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during public hearings. So, we're gonna consider resolution number eight twenty-four, and Sally Riley, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is a request for an extension to the planned unit development amendment for lodging use at Gold Hill Square. Uh, it has an address of seven oh three, seven seventeen, and seven nineteen, Gold Hill Place. The request is to approve resolution number eight twenty-four for a two-year extension for this PUD amendment for lodging use to February fourth, two thousand twenty. This is a seventy-room hotel, also referred to as the Best Western Hotel, at Gold Hill Square South, building number six. The previous approvals that took place two years ago included the planning commission approving the amendment on January fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, and then city council approving the dimensional standards related to the construction of the Best Western Hotel. And in your, um, just to refresh your memory slightly, um, Gold Hill Place, Highway twenty-four, the proposed hotel is a redevelopment of what was the former Woodland Hardware, uh, Go, uh, Goodwill, and the Sherwin-Williams, uh, retail outlet is still located there. So, outlined in yellow is the proposed hotel, and, uh, it will be built on this site according to the final development plan that was also included in your packet. And this is, uh, these are the elevations for the, um, seventy-room hotel that Mr. Page had proposed two years ago. Uh, due to some issues with relocating Sherwin-Williams, um, Mr. Page is asking for two more years, which, um, the staff believes is reasonable, and the planning commission also voted unanimously to recommend, uh, approval of the resolution. And in our findings, um, the unexpected relocation issues are, um, difficult to deal with. There have been no new development standards adopted since this project was approved, and so the general circumstances and conditions for the development remain unchanged. It's consistent with our comprehensive plan as well as zoning regulations and other regulations. It's compatible with the surrounding uses and development pattern. It's logically able to be developed with the existing infrastructure and improvements. And in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare of the citizen, citizens and visitors, it is a developer.
Sally, let me start with you. If we do not approve this, um, where does Mr. Page stand relative to the PUD? Does he have to start over in two years or whenever?
Do we have to start over? We have to avoid out the approval.
And is there any downside in the extension? What would the downside be? Mr. Page, would you like to come forward? I don't know if there's any questions. I've got one for you, but we'll see who else, who else has a question for you. So, I understand the reason for the delay is because Sherwin-Williams wants to stay for another couple of years, and that wasn't anticipated when we first talked. Is that right? Not as good as the new one. How would you characterize the chances of this being built two years from now? Okay, council. Noel?
How are you doing, Mr. Page? He can't hear? No. Um, if, if in the next two years, you don't achieve the starting of this project, are you just gonna let it go?
And you own the building, so it's not hurting anything by you not developing? Understand. Understand. Anyone else? John?
Uh, what does the agreement with Sherwin-Williams, do they have a certain amount of time that they could continue to operate there? Do they have other opportunities to extend if you don't get this project started in a couple of years? What's their situation? All right. I think I'm on.
You are?
Yeah. I was asking, what's the situation, and I'll just say contractually, with Sherwin-Williams? How long would they stay there? If you don't have your project started then in two years, are they free to continue to operate in their current location?
All right. Thank you. Anything else, council? Mr. Page, thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. We are in public comment, so if anybody would like to comment at this time, this is the time. Okay, if not, we'll move on and, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Mr. Beeson, would you like to come forward?
Yes, please, thank you.
Give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Donnie Beeson.
Try the other one, Donnie.
Oh.
There you go.
My name is Donnie Beeson, six forty-two Northwestern Place. I, uh, enough, there isn't so much to speak to council tonight, but to speak more to others that will go forward at this podium as we move into a spring of having new city manager.
You can speak later, but we need you to speak on this particular issue now. If you'd like to wait and come back-
I'm sorry.
Glad to have you.
I'm sorry, yes, I-
Thank you. If anyone would like to speak relative only to resolution eight twenty-four, this would be the time. Okay, if not, council, we'll look for a motion to approve resolution eight twenty-four.
So move.
Second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. So, we have no new business tonight. We will move on to public comment, and since you've got the microphone warm, Donnie, why don't you come on back?
I needed the exercise.
I bet you did. Sorry about that. You understand why.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to speak to the audience, but it is a pretty big bill. I think it's a huge deal for the city of Woodland Park. And I want to make a comment for all those that come up to this podium and speak going forward. Any good city manager, advocate, is going to take a long hard look at Woodland Park. They'll pull down the periodicals and read about them, and they'll look for as many Youtubes as they possibly can. We can't change what has happened in the past. We can't change what is written, what's been said, but we can as we go forward. And I think it's important that Woodland Park always puts its best foot forward, but especially now. So, this gives us the opportunity, instead of attracting good applicants for a city manager, to be attracted great ones. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. Okay, I have next on my list Deb Miller.
Evening, council and mayor. I'm here tonight to read the letter into the record, um, Chamber Board of Directors.
Excuse me, before you start?
Twelve forty-six, Real Sir Colorado Street.
Thank you.
And council, I want to say thank you. Kind words. Out my presentations here. Appreciate the amount.
Deb, we're having trouble with the mic. Let's see what we can do before you get started.
Okay. Works better?
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. This letter is coming from the Chambers Board of Directors, and I am reading this letter into the record this evening on behalf of the Chamber Board of Directors. Now, what did I do? Okay. At last council meeting and recently, in an interview published this week in the Courier, incorrect statements are being declared as truths in respect to the fiscal operation of the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce. We wanted to come tonight before you to share the facts of the operations of the chamber. Prior to nineteen sixty-eight, a chamber organization existed without incorporation. In nineteen sixty-eight, the Greater Woodland Park Chamber incorporated as a five oh one C six organization. Some of our past chairs have included Woodland Park business persons Fred Mills, Robert Bergman, Gene Sperry, Cal Elder, Lois Sill, Tom Carrick, Scott Downs, Rick Chulik, Lenore Hotchkiss, and our current chairman, John Thomason. Many others have led this great organization as well. The chambers' funding comes via two revenue streams. First is membership in our organization, and second is through three fundraisers that we hold each year: annual dinner, golf tournament, and Oktoberfest. The chamber has never received city taxpayer funding for chamber operations, nor has the city of Woodland Park subsidized chamber operations. The chamber, under the leadership of Chairman Glenn Sill in nineteen ninety-six, entered into a paid lease agreement with the city for the space which housed and continues to house the chamber operations. This lease agreement was fashioned, like other lease agreements, that cities have entered into with various chamber organizations throughout Colorado. Mark Fitzgerald, a former city manager, approached the chamber inquiring about interest on behalf of the chamber to operate a visitor center during his tenure here, again as city manager. An agreement was formed between the city and the chamber at that time. In two thousand and eight, city manager David Butterey and chamber president Debbie Miller agreed a contract for service between the city and the chamber was in order. We agreed the scope of service would be an informational locale for visitors and locals in reference to local activities, attractions, conferences, meetings, and events. Furthermore, we agreed the chamber is a non-exclusive, independent contractor to the city under the terms of the agreement, and the chamber is acting at all times and performing as an independent contractor and not employed or subsidized by the city. We also would like to clarify comments in reference to volunteers. These are chamber volunteers. They donate their time to assist us with our day-to-day chamber operations. This includes business trainings we hold, special events, fundraising, and operation of the visitor center contract. These volunteers are retired business professionals who understand the value a chamber adds to any community, and they want to give back by assisting us at the chamber. I thought it, the board thought it important tonight, as did I, that two significant chamber accomplishments are talked about. Out of hundreds of accompaniment, accomplishments we have achieved over the past several years, the chamber brought businesses to the table and worked alongside the city to rewrite and adopt a sign ordinance. I think, Sally, we remember that. And this sign ordinance is palatable for business and the city. We were able to achieve this because we are not part of the city government. We speak for voice of business. In addition, hundreds of people see the other accomplishment ref- of people see the other accomplishment referred to tonight as they travel up and down the past, the U-Pass. Forest fires' effect on forest conditions are long-lasting. Evidence of those effects occurred in late 2012 and into 2013. These after-effects of the fire contributed to significant hardships for Teller County and Woodland Park businesses when the highway was constantly closed. The chamber brought CDOT and the region's businesses to the table to discuss solutions to keep the economy flowing to our business community and to address CDOT's safety concerns for the traveling public. CDOT has placed gates and cameras along Highway 24, which enabled them to monitor the highway and conditions to minimize closure times and to allow commerce to flow to our region. This solution was achieved through the efforts of the chamber, bringing business and CDOT to the table to create a solution that would be palatable again for all. In closing, we appreciate your time given us this evening to clarify that the Greater Woodland Park Chamber is an organization which operates independently from the city of Woodland Park. We are proud of our continued visitor's center contractual success rate, as shown this past year of $6-plus return on investment for the city of Woodland Park, and it's signed sincerely the Greater Woodland Park Chamber Board of Directors, and we will provide a copy to city clerk Suzanne. And I just want to, in closing, on my own comments, I sit in a very unique position. I'm employed by the chamber. We receive a contract for service for the dollars that are paid out to us by the city, and they are expected a return on investment through this contract. And we are expected to come and show what these dollars are as far as the return on investment for the city, not a subsidy to operate the chamber. And moreover, the unique part of this is I'm also a part of the Main Street organization, and I sit on their Board of Directors. I'm cognizant of a board, as a board member of the Main Street Group, understanding our MOU that we have with the city and the subsidy that the city has provided for the operation of the Main Street organization. So I say this tonight to point out, those are two distinct, different issues. So thank you tonight for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Have nobody else signed up tonight? Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make comment? Okay, we will move forward. Mayor's report, I'm going to reserve the right to speak later and move on to Carol. Nothing, Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Main Street has a nice, big announcement to tell the council and the citizens that David's fired. New mics, anyway. Main Street has just recently been notified that they have full designated status as about a week or so ago, and so that hurdle has been achieved. Astounding results, acclamations from the, both the Colorado and the national organizations. I was in Denver yesterday at an event where Main Street was well represented across the state, and Woodland Park is number one in Main Street in the region. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations, Main Street. Mr. Paul?
Congratulations on your success on Main Street, and thank everybody for participating and being here and giving input. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Noel.
I was going to discuss two things. I was going to discuss the Veterans Biker Rally, but I believe the organization is coming here next council meeting, is that correct?
Mr. Weir is expected to be here on the 15th, yeah, so I think that's a good time to delay the discussion.
Right, so we, yeah, we can talk about, you know, our, the issues then. The other thing is, I was hoping Debbie was available for some questions about the visitor's center. Would that be okay? Would you be okay with that?
Thank you for the clarification on the chamber. Nobody's arguing the incredible job that the chamber is doing. The concern is, how's the visitor's center doing? Well, I heard a lot about the chamber. That's great. We're not responsible for the chamber. We are responsible for the visitor's center and the visitors coming to here. One thing you mentioned here was, all the volunteers are chamber volunteers. So if I had a phone call and I called up to the chamber or the visitor's center, what would...where would the loyalties lie? That's what I don't understand. Would they lie with the chamber members, or would they lie with everyone and every business in Woodland Park?
So Noel, as I quoted in the letter from the Chamber Board of Directors, there's a specific duty within our contract that we promote attractions, events, we promote those types of things. The chamber promotes their membership. It's not a part of the contract that we promote every business in Woodland Park. That's not a part of the contract. Our volunteers do day-to-day business. They, for instance, today they were stuffing the invitations for the annual dinner, things such as that. But in what the letter explained as well, is they help us make sure that we adhere to the visitor's center contract, and we do the promotions of what we should be promoting and that sort of thing. So they don't have to choose loyalties.
Okay. I kind of went out to, I started looking around at other visitor's center websites, and I went out to our website, and I was kind of set back when I saw that the visitor's center, it was very hard to find the specific link to just the visitor's center, and when I went to the visitor's center link, I didn't give very much information. It was links to other websites. But then I also noticed that packets, people that were going to move here, you were charging $10 for those packets? Is that correct?
That's correct. We cover our postage to send that out.
I guess I'm, my concern, and maybe this is what I've been thinking about for the last week, is we are, we are, as contract of services, we are giving $42,000. Where does that, is there a separate account, bank account for that money to the chamber money, or does it just mix with the chamber money? I guess maybe that's not a question you can, you need to answer, because that's, it's a contract for services, but that's my concern.
It is a contract for service, of which, again, we are given a scope from the city of what they want us to attain, and we come back. This year, I was a month late coming in to make the presentation, but we come every year to make the presentation, to show you where the dollars are spent, via advertising, what we do as far as any operational cost, because we do make, there are copies that we make about hiking trails. One of the big things is about altitude up here, working with people about altitude, things like that. I'm not sure exactly which site. Now, there, the chamber has a website.
Correct, yes.
It is the chamber.
It says visitor, there's a visitor's center.
But we do have an area on there that is visitor's center, but we do not have a separate visitor's center website.
Okay. I have a lot of questions for you. Do you have time?
That's up to councils.
Is that up to councils?
Mayor?
I'll keep it, I'll keep it. So, Main Street, congratulations. We offered $30,000 to Main Street. They gave us a budget, a breakdown budget of everything they're spending with that $30,000. Would it be okay to see a breakdown budget from the chamber of where the $42,000 is going?
I give that to you in the presentation.
Well, I want to see it on a piece of paper in front of me, is that okay?
Sure.
It's up to you. I mean, I'm just, I'm suggesting.
But we do provide it.
I think it would make me feel more comfortable if that was in front of me.
It is provided in the presentation that we make.
I understand the presentation, and Main Street made a presentation, but they also had a physical copy of the breakdown in the budget, and that would really help. I can't ask any questions about the chamber, because I feel like that's up to your members and your board, but I still want to, I still want to focus on the $42,000 and what we're getting out of it. And I know you did the presentation. I still feel that we're not getting enough for the $42,000.
Speak for yourself.
I know. Okay, I will speak for myself. So just, I'd like to see, I'd like to see more in front of me with that $42,000, that's all. I hope that is okay.
Councilman, that certainly you're right, and again, we've given that breakdown. Marketing is an interesting area.
Will help us learn.
And I certainly will help you learn, and I learn every day when I'm dealing in the marketing realm. Is social media more effective than television advertising, radio advertising, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook? You can buy ads on Facebook. You can do all kinds of different things, and we're working with all types of different experts in trying to learn what's the best bang for our buck in providing that back. One thing I will follow up with again, and I do mention this in the presentation, I take your budget, and I look at what the city's budget is and what you get in on sales tax revenue, what you take in on lodging revenue, and I can go back since at least I've gotten here. I can't go back before that with numbers, but I can show you sustained increases, and that can be related back to marketing efforts. But again, that's not something that's tangible you can touch. It's inherent that we know in the marketing realm that that plays a role.
Right, okay. Yeah, any information that would make myself feel more comfortable, and maybe some of the other council members, then I think that would help.
Thank you, Councilman Sawyer, and I do appreciate that you understand that the chamber is a separate entity.
Yes, I do.
We are not a part of the city, nor are we subsidized by the city. Thank you.
I understand that, pardon.
Thanks, Deb. Before you go, one question, because it seems to be an underlying question all the time, so help us understand now. The question is from the community that does not belong to the chamber, right? Get money to the chamber for any, whatever reason is, we don't belong to the chamber, and we're not able to advertise right at the visitor's center. I know that's not the case. Can you explain to us what that process looks like?
Sir, certainly. When Mayor Randolph was here, we did a walk-through through the building, and so there is an area within, inside the cultural center that any business can bring in any kind of advertisement pamphlets, and they have the right to put that in there. And so that was an agreed-upon solution to work that. Again, understanding that the office, when you walk into where we're at, that is the chamber office. And we do the contract for service. We have an area in there, and you can't draw a line and step over and say, here's chamber, here's visitor's center. And so that was the agreement, that businesses who wanted to put things within the cultural center have the availability to do that.
Great. I would just ask that, you know, those people, and I'm not saying they're not, just those people be treated like everybody else. We try to do the best we can, because it benefits all of us, as you well know. I'm not saying you don't, but I think you'll agree, others in this room would say, this has kind of been an underlying question for people, so thanks for making that clear.
Thank you. And Mayor, I'd like to follow up with one thing. When you think about the television advertising that we do, our commercials, we single no one business out. We single the region, and when we talk about the region, it benefits everybody.
I got some more questions. We talked about last, in fact, it was mentioned by Val separating the chamber and the visitor's center, and I mentioned that, wouldn't it make your job easier as running the chamber to not have to run a visitor's center? Would it, if we, if, I can't, if I bring up a presentation to show that we could separate the visitor's center and put it in a different building and have it run by volunteers, it might cost a little bit more, but yet we would have more focus on the community, and the chamber could run the chamber. Wouldn't that be easier for you?
I think we do an awesome job in returning a return on investment. To say, is it easier? I think you're delving into the operations of the chamber, and I'm not going to comment on that, Noel.
No, you don't have to. I'm not asking. I just, when I think about a visitor's center in a chamber, I almost think it's a conflict of interest, because here you have a members, and then you have everyone. And where does the loyalties lie when a phone call comes in? Is it the members, or is it everyone? And that's where my concern lies, that's all. So it's not, it's just, just concerns, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm just saying that's, that's where I'm wondering how you're able to make the differences there.
I think we've operated wonderfully in 12 years and operated successfully, and that, again, shows on the return you get back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you very much. Thanks, Noel. Do you have anything else, Noel, before we move on?
No.
John?
Can I ask, I see a bunch of stuff happening in, around the DDA. What's the latest on that?
Yes. Where to begin with that? We are, we are moving some dirt to finalize our temporary permit to finish out the dirt. We, I signed that a couple days ago to have Mallett go ahead and move some dirt. So you see, is that what you're talking about?
Well, there's a lot bigger issues.
Well, yeah, the court case, we are still being, we are still being sued, and I cannot talk about it. That's about it.
So there's been no settlement?
There has been no settlement.
What about the approach to TIF?
We are this close to coming to, Alborn and Ellen are about to make a presentation in the next couple weeks to us with what they have, are proposing, and we'll go ahead and, you know, fine-tune it, and hopefully have a new TIF, TIF, I wouldn't say agreement, but a new way to have people that wanting TIFs to apply for them.
A more standardized process?
More standardized, less, less subjective, so, you know, it's more, you know, there's boundaries to it.
Thank you. John?
I forget what I was going to say. No. Last evening, as I was reviewing for what I hoped was the final time, the job description for our new city manager, a couple of thoughts occurred to me. I sent an email off this morning to Aaron and to Suzanne, who is passing out these emails. Not that I want to memorialize them, but an honest question. What I noticed as I was going through the job description, that I didn't find any reference to what seems to me to be a financially important city manager responsibility. And that's maximizing the investment return from the funds that the city has in the emergency unassigned reserve, which most of us know now that it is 10% of the general fund. And so there was nothing about a city manager being involved in that, even though it might in fact be Mike Farina, who's doing the heavy lifting there, and finding an investment firm that will maximize the money, funds we have in that reserve fund. And so you might think this is trivial, but I think it's not. And so let's say for a moment that the city council decides next year we want to increase the reserve to 20%, not the 10% we now have in this year's budget. That amount could grow to $1.65 million. 20% of a budget that I'll just assume will revenue somewhere around $8 million. I don't know whether you share any of my interest in things like investment returns on city funds. If you do, great. We need to decide what we might do about it. We need to decide what we might do about it. Aaron advised me that this seems like a new policy and one that council might want to ponder and discuss. I don't know whether that's the case. I'd like to discuss this a little further. And she said, would you consider bringing this up and asking if it'd be slated for a future work session or meeting? It could even occur after you get the new city manager on board as part of Goals and Objectives discussions. My question to my colleagues would be, you want to do anything with this? I think it's significant. I think the dollars could be used other places, but I don't know whether you feel as strongly as I do about it or not. So I'd like to get some feedback.
If I could, please, before you have your discussion, to add to the points that you're making. While it may not be specifically listed as a task, it certainly fits within the responsibilities for financial management. So I want the council and the community to understand that our unrestricted unassigned fund balance as well as our cash balances aren't under a mattress somewhere. They are being invested. It's why we have a finance director and treasurer. The treasurer component of Mike Farina's responsibilities are to manage those investments. So we have been doing that for as long as the city's existed, as far as I know, and had money to invest. For you to specifically call that out, that certainly is your decision to do that, but please understand that we do invest the funds judiciously and appropriately. We have by law limitations on the things that we can invest in. We can't invest in gambling in Cripple Creek. We can't invest in certain things. And Mike, if you would, if you could step up and just say just a couple of, some of those limitations that we have, where we have some of our money invested in those types of things, just to flesh out the discussion and then council will follow your guidance, of course.
Yes, Mayor. Counsel. First of all, the city does have an investment policy. It's older, but we do have an investment policy. One of the things that the city wants to do with our excess funds or idle cash funds is maintain the safety first and foremost of the city funds. Secondly, liquidity and then yield. However, you know, we do want to seek the best yield of our idle cash that we can. We do have money invested with Vectra Wealth Advisors. They are invested primarily in agency funds. We also have money in Colotrust, which is a group of, or it's an entity that cities can invest in or put our money in. We also have CSafe, which is similar. It's a local government investment pool. The rest of the funds are used for operations in our general accounting, or our general bank account. And we have some other funds that are quite liquid as well. So we can invest only up to a certain number of years. We can't go out beyond that. I believe it's three years, might be five. And then there are only, we can only invest in very safe investments. So we may not be able to get the yield that non-governments can, but, you know, we do seek out the best yield that we can.
Well, I've had this discussion, not with you, but with your predecessor several years back. And I remember asking, the first couple of years I was on council, about what's happening to these funds. I couldn't recall getting any reports unless I asked specific questions about them. Haven't heard much recently, and that's why I'm wondering if we should put a little more emphasis on that. I did read through the job description very carefully. I saw the financials and the verbiage. I'm not satisfied with what I've been hearing.
In what respect?
In the sense of where the funds are, how much, what was the return last year, the year before, the year before?
I, I agree that that might be a requirement for our financial director to provide us that report on a periodic basis, but I'm not certain the tie to the job description. I, I've known for some time, I mean, it was one of the first questions I came, came with to the council is, is how do we invest it and what are the restrictions on the investments? I know that occurs. If, a separate issue that you brought up, though, is the, the resolution that we passed asking for a 10% reserve. If you want to discuss increasing that, we certainly can do that, but I'm not, I'm not getting the connection between all of these, these dots.
Well, I, that is a discussion I think we would have when we discuss in the 2019 budget.
Or during our Goals and Objectives session, we can talk about modifying the resolution. But if you're asking for a requirement for Mike to provide us with periodic updates on, on our investments, I would think that would be a fair request.
Mike, on our, in our audit, do we get those numbers reported?
The investments are reported in the audit, in the notes to the financial statements. However, it would be totally fine to start bringing a report to council on the investments and where, where the investments are, the rate of return that we're receiving. That would be no issue at all.
No, I would just simply like to know we're investing and getting the best return we can, understanding what the limitations are.
We'll be happy to provide that.
And how many different investment firms are you using and why?
Appreciate that. No red or black, I guess, is what you're saying.
I'm sorry, what's that?
No red or black. Red, black.
I'm not sure what you mean.
You don't go to Cripple Creek, obviously.
No. Yeah. You know, one of, I put together a list of things that I saw that, you know, I wanted to do as the new finance director. And one of them is to develop an investment plan and work on our investment. I think our investment policy needs updating and also the investment plan as well with what we, where we put our idle cash funds and to seek out that best yield that we can, keeping in mind safety and liquidity first.
Counsel, how about we just decide, we will have a work session, maybe even prior to Goals and Objectives, maybe after we hire a city manager to have this discussion with Mr. Farina and our new city manager? Would that make sense?
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Everybody agree on that?
I would suggest is, pardon me, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would suggest that, not top priority, but maybe we could get an interim report before that and then put a work session together per your suggestion. That's okay with Mr. Butter?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, and the real question is the Goals and Objectives. Do we want to do it prior to the election or after the election?
Our Goals and Objectives have to be after the election.
If I could suggest, let Mr. Farina put together the report. And it may answer a lot of your questions on what the vehicle, vehicles are for investments so you don't get the cart before the horse. Let's, let's get you educated and then that'll help you decide what you want to do next.
Yes, we are going in tangents, I see this, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Mike, thank you very much. John? Anything else, sir?
No.
Thank you, sir. We will move on. City's attorney report. Okay, thank you. City manager, Mr. Butter?
An election update and then I've got something very quickly, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just a quick, quick update for the council. On Monday, we had the lot drawing for the placement of the candidates' names on the ballot and that went very nicely. We are in the process of securing the election judges and getting them to commit and eventually getting a training in for them. And we are working on the ballot and the envelope design. That's my update.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay.
Just very quickly, Mayor, I had a discussion with the citizens today. They had read something or been told something about some of our snow plowing operations. And I want council and the community to understand what we have and how we go about plowing our snow. In our Streets Division, which handles the snow plowing of our 60 miles of road, we have six vehicles that do plowing. We have one tandem dump truck. We have three single axle dump trucks. We have a FUSA, which is a cab-over, smaller dump truck, and one pickup truck. And each of these vehicles has quick attach, quick release, snow plows. And also the tandem and the three single axles have what we call, huh? Quick offload, quick unload dump boxes that can change out from sanders to dump trucks themselves. So during the wintertime, those trucks aren't sitting idle if they're not plowing snow. They're the trucks that helped us muck out the detention pond at the bottom of the Majestic Park, you may understand, may recall. They're also the vehicles that carry the dirt to provide the fill material when we have water breaks. So the vehicles that we have in the Streets Division that provide the snow plowing are also very much used throughout the rest of the year and the wintertime for other missions within our Streets Division. So I felt it was important to help that citizen understand that and for the council to understand that as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question, David?
Sure.
At what do you begin plowing operations after so many inches in a certain period of time?
You know, it's, the policy says three to four inches, but we haven't had that much yet this year. I know that I see about two inches and the crews are out. They're really concerned about making sure that it doesn't get packed down and turn to ice. So they may not be out at 3 o'clock in the morning, but they're out fairly early to get the snow removed. There's a dynamic with snow that if you, if it's about less than two inches, the plows don't actually remove much of it just because of the way the blades float and the down pressure and it ends up getting packed down. So less than two inches, they're probably not going to plow because it really only harms the effort, but they'll be out sanding, that's for sure.
One question, and I have to bring this up because it's brought to my attention many times. Kelly Road seems to be a, where the trees are by the middle school. It seems to get extremely icy and it stays that way almost through the whole year. Is there, is there a way to combat that or somehow maybe do some de-icer on there to melt the ice? Or do we have any chemical?
We put salt sand on it and we get our road grader out periodically to bust through that.
Okay.
But it's a high-travel road and it's in the shade. So it does, it gets down there. And ice slicer, the product that CDOT uses is very expensive. We do use a salt-sand mix to provide the grip, to provide the traction. We'll, we'll get it and continue to try to keep it as clean as we possibly can. And I just might point out that it's taken us a lot of years to get to the place where we have these specific vehicles to plow certain areas. The tandem dump truck, for example, would have a difficult time getting up to where councilmen car live, so we have the smaller vehicles going into the hillside. So we fine-tune the fleet to attack the snow and salt and sand mission that we have specifically for Woodland Park.
I just wanted to bring it up.
Thank you. Ben's taking notes, so I think.
Thank you, Ben.
I promise you, you'll see improvement about May because it'll all melt.
We hope. We hope. Yeah, thank you. Just one last thing, kind of an aside, for me and for everybody in the community, we always hear negative and, and so once in a while I like to respond to the positive. I was at Walmart and an older lady, I'm guessing 85 years old, came up to me and said, you look like the guy that's the mayor of the city. She didn't know who I was, but she said, I think I've seen your picture. Are you the mayor? Yes. I'd never seen this lady before. She said, I just want to thank you for the pool. It has changed my life. And so, you know, there's, there's always good that's coming out. I see a lot of smiles. We're doing a lot of great things. And to what Donnie said, you know, we've got a great community. If we find a way to concentrate on the positive, we're going to be that much better of a community. And so my response to this lady is, can you come do a video with me, right? I mean, we need this, we need this kind of response. But she said six months ago, she literally, she wasn't able to go to the grocery store and, and do these things on her own. She was in one of those little automatic carts that you all have seen and she's walking around without a cane and attributes a lot of it, at least, to our aquatic center. So thank you, staff. Thank you, everybody, for help providing that for us. And with that, on a positive note, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.